So do we have Jackie? Jackie Chapman, how are you? Going through quickly. Let me call your name and give me a verbal so we make sure that we have some activity. Cat, you know, you're gonna be first. Cat?
Present.
Very good. Katie? Bruce? Yes? John?
Eric.
Jackie?
Present.
Alright. Still a little low on your volume.
That better?
Very good. Bill?
Present.
Troy?
Present.
And Tom Michaels? I'm here. There you are. It's not you have the middle of my screen. Good evening, everyone. Now we have it seven P M. Devin, are you ready?
I'm ready.
Very good. Call it officially seven oh one, like you call me, June sixteenth of two thousand and twenty, Council meetings quarter. And ask for a be please rise if you're able. I will mute and we'll do the. Uh, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ask council to unmute yourselves. You should have that ability. Yeah. Why am I so short? I'm just moving the camera. There we go. And we can start off. We have been doing public comments at the end and asking for people to put if they would like to make comments into the chat. I had a request from someone on council to have the opportunity for comments at the beginning again. So if there is anybody who has logged in to the city Zoom call and would like to make comments, then please put your name into the group chat and I will call upon you. And also if there's anybody else that would like to have a comment at the beginning of the meeting, feel free to contact us. Otherwise, we won't give opportunity for comments at the end of the meeting as well. Seeing no names coming up in the group chat, uh, plenty for us to talk about. So mayor's report actually like to add two items to the agenda. One is a discussion. And this is my oversight. A discussion about odd even parking in the Dexter Park parking lot. So with council approval, like to add that to the agenda for discussion. And does anybody oppose? Very good. And the other, I will read the wording. Like to add consideration of a resolution to indicate the support of the council regarding the home rule request in progress of Senate Bill S eighty-two seventeen, Assembly Bill eight ten three sixteen, which specifically relates to the modification of a retirement plan status for a firefighter and pursuant to Article nine of the state constitution and municipal own rule law hereby request the New York State Legislature to enact such legislation. Like to add that to the council agenda as well. And we'll talk further about that. Is there any objection to that? Very none, seeing none, we've got two items to discuss at the end. Uh, minutes from June second of two thousand and twenty, discussion regarding the minutes. John Bennett.
I'm just raising my hand for motion to accept.
I thought you might have had an issue or a concern. Does anybody have an issue or concern?
You gotta have a motion first, sir.
Thank you. Motion to consider filing. Hand being up so early. Food drunk. John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter. Now discussion, any issues or concerns regarding the minutes from our last meeting? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor are filing the minutes as is, please say aye?
Aye.
Give way. Opposed? Then item number one, resolution to approve a special event application for real life for life on September twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty, motion to consider. Uh, Bruce Tyler, second, Bill Carpenter, their discussion. So this is what we are calling, what they are calling the luminaria event. And this would take place. I'm trying to make sure I don't get it. In conjunction with the Corn Ducky Derby and the Paint the Town Purple event. And it would be a display of luminaria bags purchased in memory or in honor of people who have been stricken with cancer. So the bags will be lit from nine to ten P M. And community members are invited to walk the pathway, looking at the bags and supporting people who are in the fight or have been in the fight with cancer. Alright, discussion.
I just had a quick question of, um, since we don't know what September exactly is gonna look like, does this impact? I see that they're asking for bathrooms in the buildings to be available. Does this impact anything with operations that we would wanna make sure we're considering?
Yes, there are some question marks going forward. It's a great question, Cat. Uh, we will, the plan when we had the discussion was to move this application forward and allow city staff to work as the situation warrants and progresses to make sure that we can meet the questions appropriately. So at this point, uh, we're looking for council approval in terms of the addition to the event, recognizing that there could be all sorts of changes from now on. And my, my recommendation is to allow city staff to make the determination when the time gets closer. Uh, but similar to the Corn Ducky Derby, this is an event that really is very positive in many ways and can be a great opportunity for us as a community. Do you think so, that clarification? Thank you, Cat. Further questions? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Then item number two, resolution to approve a micro enterprise application for funds of twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars under the city's fiscal year two thousand eighteen, micro enterprise assistance program pursuant to recommendation by the city's loan committee, motion to consider. Uh, Bill Carpenter, your second, try it back with discussion. I heard that. Okay, now I see a hand. Cat?
I, I just need to acknowledge that, um, I, I read the proposal and in it, it does reference, um, purchasing some products from New York, from Penn Oil. And so I spoke with corporation counsel, it wasn't, I just make sure that. I disclosed that my husband is a business partner, uh, that in a business, so I just wanted to make sure I disclosed that.
Very good. So in case it was broken up for anybody else, Cat McCarthy is proposing that her significant other is a business partner in a different business with New York, with New York, New York Penns. Did I get that right? You're breaking up, Cat, I can't hear you.
They, they have a contractual relationship. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, just that they have a contractual relationship on a separate matter.
So it's not related to this specifically. Katie, second.
Um, I have a question for Linda from Doma. My question is, um, there's a training that's associated with this money usually, is this person willing to undergo the training?
Uh, she is. And it, actually she started today because the Small Business Development Center did come up with a virtual training course that we submitted to the state and they approved it. So she's taking it today, Thursday and next Tuesday.
Thank you. Well done.
Hey, Mayor.
Mayor? Bruce Tyler?
I, I just wanna kinda, it's sort of the rule of our discussion we had, I think, at our last meeting when we cleared, uh, a lot of loans off the books, you know, that I appreciate all the information we got on this. We don't have a chance to actually look at how thorough, in my opinion, these individuals are vetted by Doma before they make the recommendation. And we know, we know this obviously is gonna shake out six years from now, five years from now, whatever, but, you know, looking at the information we have today, it, it makes a lot of sense to me. So I, I appreciate that, uh, Linda, sending us all that information.
Very good. Thank you, Bruce. Further comments or questions?
Well, just, just another comment that, uh, this individual is the only person that stepped forth regarding, uh, the loan itself, so, uh, that that kinda goes a long ways as well.
Uh huh. Very good. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, it all. Agenda item number three, consideration of resolution to approve the RFP to Toma Development for the two thousand and nineteen income property program contingent on approval from OCR, motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, your second, try it back with discussion. So this is a grant application, uh, that we put in, we've been awarding, and we put out an RFP for managing the grants. And Toma Development was the only respondent and, uh, we needed to notify OCR that there was only one respondent, so that's why it says contingent upon approval from OCR. Questions? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number four, consideration of resolution to approve the RFP to Toma Development for the New York Penn Oil Project contingent upon, and let's just end that, the New York Penn Oil project, because we do have an email back on this one saying that we did get approval. And in similar situation, there was not, there was only one respondent, so we needed to contact OCR and make sure that they said we were okay with that. So I'll ask for a motion to consider. And that's John Bennett filed by Jackie Chapman. So the resolution is as is on the agenda with the exception that we are just ending it after the word project, not continuing. Motion's on the floor. Cat McCarthy?
Uh, I also need to once again disclose the same information as per my conversation with corporation counsel. Uh, my husband contracts with New York Penn Oil in a separate business, uh, it is not related to this proposal.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, not opposed, alright. Oh, just late getting in there, Mayor. Moving too quickly.
Motion passes, eight oh.
I'm gonna sign out, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Number five, resolution to recognize inappropriate into the fire department donation account is a trust agency account, the amount of one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars from the Portland Produce Company, uh, CP Cash and Carry. Motion to consider. Jackie Chapman, second, Tom Michaels, discussion. And I'm looking. So Chief Freeman, I see him down there. Questions for the chief?
If I could comment, Mayor, this, uh, this donation came about from CP Cash and Carry. Apparently they, uh, during this COVID situation, and the first responder vendors that they deal with and were one of them, they placed the, the names in a hat and had a drawing and, and decided on a, a day's worth of percentage of their, uh, monies they received to donate back to a first responder agency. We were selected, so this, uh, this was done, as a matter of fact, Captain Jensen was still here, he landed down and accepted it. And our intent was to use, uh, in our donation account specifically for smoke detectors and carbon dioxide detectors, uh, throughout the city. We've also applied for a FEMA grant to get more, uh, smoke detectors and if we're successful in that grant, this money can be used, um, to be the magic cross for the city. You know, instead of getting twelve hundred dollars worth of smoke detectors, we could get upwards of thirty thousand dollars, which could help us in that whole mission of making sure we get these things out. So we're very fortunate in this and I wanted to announce CP Cash and Carry on their, uh, donation and what they did. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I didn't think anybody would have a question after that. Very detailed, thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Carries eight oh, and much thanks to CP Cash and Carry, it's tremendous to see that and who knows, somebody's life might be saved because the smoke goes off and, uh, people hear about something before it becomes an emergency. Very good. Agenda item number six, consideration of resolution to approve for the Portland City Police Department to conduct the seventh annual bicycle sale on Friday, June twenty-sixth from eight AM until twelve noon. Motion to consider. Cat McCarthy, second, Bill Carpenter, your discussion.
So that was a nice, uh, nice story that, uh, Deputy Chief put together regarding the, uh, the stolen bicycle. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read that or not. Uh, that was certainly, certainly an eye opener.
General information for the public, if you've not seen the agenda item, and this is the seventh annual, but we have bicycles that come into possession of the city, due different ways and means. I'll admit, there's four bicycles that I dropped off because I knew that they would go through a big clog. Uh, all bicycles are sold as is and it's a flat fee or price of twenty-five dollars. Uh, there are some that are in rougher shape, so they may probably be a little bit less. And we are asking buyers to sign a waiver acknowledging the conditions of the sale. All proceeds will be split evenly and donated to the Portland Water Group's Deer Fund and the Community Oriented Police Program. There's approximately eighty bicycles that can be sold, all in various stages of repair or need for repair, depending on how you look at it. Community oriented police officer Jesse Abbott will be president, will be present to register bicycles during the sale and this will help continue the CPD's bicycle registration program. And, uh, if a bicycle is stolen, then it's easier for us to track it. All officials present will be wearing P P E and we are asking that everybody who attends wears a mask as well. Very good. Are there questions, council? Hearing none, there's eighty bicycles. More, we got the motion on the floor. All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
And opposed?
You haven't said where, the more this sales gonna take place at for the people that are out listening or have questions?
Right up to the armory. Armory Drill Room, it is in there and I did not say that, thank you for asking. So right up the armory and there will be signage, the armory is off of Miller Avenue, for anybody who may not be familiar. Miller Avenue, close to Home Red. Adjacent to Smith School.
And Mayor, aren't there also accessories like helmets that are donated?
Good question. Is the deputy chief with us this evening? I'm sure if you're gonna.
Catalama.
Geez, no, I don't, I don't know if there's helmets that are donated, um, but this, this being called the seventh annual is because it's the only, it's, it's when we started just doing flat prices for only the bicycles. The city used to have an auction and all kinds of things you'd thrown into it, but now it's just bicycles. Um, I'm not aware of the helmets, it's possible, but I don't know.
Very good. Alright. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. I'm assuming I did not ask her. That was eight oh. Then item number seven, consideration of resolution to release an RFP to secure the services of consultants to update the multi-governmental Tiapnioga River Waterfront Revitalization Program funded through a New York State Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Grant. Uh, motion to consider. John Bennett, second, Cat McCarthy, discussion. So basically waterways can be attractive and they can enhance the value of the community. And we do have some waterways through the city. So with the Tiapnioga being our local waterway and knowing that it flows from the north, continuing through the south, we have the opportunity to work with a couple municipalities around us, come up with a plan that can potentially better utilize our waterways.
Hey, Mayor.
Mr. Tyler?
I, I just have a point of clarification, I could not find, just because I'm curious, what does M B E and W B E stand for?
M W B E?
Yeah, it says, uh, rationale for M B E slash W B E percentages of fifteen and fifteen. I just, I'm just curious what those initials stand for.
Minority, women, businesses, minority and women, businesses.
I didn't, I couldn't pick that up, Matt.
Minority and women, businesses? So what the, uh, expectation is from the state is when we engage in consultants and when we hire, we are more than just encouraged to work with minority or women owned businesses.
Got it. Okay.
The idea is that we are promoting growth, uh, across the spectrum in terms of businesses and who owns the businesses.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, I'm easy.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight, consideration, consideration of resolutions to adopt a request or proposal regarding the property at one nineteen Pendleton Street, which is under city ownership, motion to consider. We got Jackie Chapman, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion on.
Rest in peace.
Powerful discussions.
I had, uh, reached out to Rick today to, uh, add my two cents. And, uh, he's gonna take that under consideration, I guess. No, no, I'm gonna take and do it. Um, I mean, right now, from what I hear, heard from everybody, I have a two cent value, uh, proposed RFP. But in any event, let me explain what's going on. We've owned this property for a number of years. We acquired it, uh, in a tax foreclosure, uh, halfway agreement to, to get out of, from under it, but by the previous owner. Uh, we have, Matt has made heroic attempts to rent, sell and do a variety of things over the past probably decade after that building and yet, uh, we, despite those efforts, we're not, haven't been able to kind of move it along and it's, and, and we've already declared it to be surplus as it doesn't provide us any, uh, city usefulness right now. So, uh, we're proposing, uh, a request for proposal for a couple of reasons. One, uh, we don't wanna just send it into an auction where we would not have a, a little bit better control over what the property is going to be used for and we would have less control over, uh, how much money we'd get it for it. Uh, so we adopted, we suggesting, or I'm suggesting, an RFP proposal where we have a number of stipulations that need to be met in order for, uh, the property to be sold by the city to the buyer with these conditions so that the property, uh, is, uh, returned to some useful purpose. And I'm hopeful that the stipulations in the RFP that I presented, including Tom's, uh, recommendation that the parking of the, of the business, um, um, automobiles be limited to, uh, you know, cars and light trucks and not be having machinery. And so I'll change that in the stipulation. Uh, but, uh, we're going to, uh, send it out to a number of newspapers. We might have a local bidders, I know they're, they're certainly interested in some of the adjacent landowners in the property, uh, and wanting to improve it. So, uh, we'll, we're taking a chance that we'll get something. If we don't get what we are asking for exactly or close enough for, uh, horseshoes, then, uh, then, you know, we'll either unload the property or try to think of some other way of, of moving that property along, getting some benefit from it.
Any questions? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you, we'll put out those changes now. Yep, thank you, Rick. Thank you, yep, we'll put out a request for proposal, get a piece of property, hopefully back active very soon. Then item number nine, discussion on the Portland Police Department Annual Report. Uh, we'll turn the floor over to our police chief, but the police department has an annual report they put out every year, um, details and number of items. And without further ado, chief, take it away.
Okay, uh, thank you, I'm glad that we were slightly able to get it out, even though we're halfway through June. Uh, typically I would have had it out a couple of months ago, um, but due to furloughs, we got a little bit behind. And there's also a problem with some people being able to, uh, look at the report electronic. I for one couldn't pull it up, uh, on my computer at work, because I don't have the right version of Word. So I was hesitant to put it on our website, because I know that it could all be wrecked off of it. And I don't know what to hang up it, I'm still, uh, working on it. Uh, typically if we had in-person meetings, I'd hand out a hard copy to all the council and to, uh, law and finance and the mayor. Um, and I do have those available, but if the customer just have to find the best means to get it to you or come to the PD to get it. Um, but it follows the same reports that have been, that I've been looking for the last, I think, four years. I think I resurrected it again in, in twenty fifteen. Um, we went through a hiatus, so we weren't doing that in a report, we just got tied down with the thing, so table of contents, I was in there, but, um, just try to show a little bit of what we did for the year nineteen, a little bit of transparency and some statistical numbers. Um, of course, we're statistically driven based on, uh, what the state, federal government or us, uh, from us, um, in a lot of different categories. And I think that's gonna get more intense now as the, uh, weeks and months go by. But if anybody's got a specific question on it, um, I can answer for you. We did, we did have a, a separate reports from our school resource officer, our training division and our community oriented policing officer and our K nine division.
Okay, is that coming up on everybody's screen?
Yeah.
Coming up online. Very good. Uh, hopefully the pass code to the safety is not in here, chief, but there's, uh, quick, okay, that's not outside of city hall. The sirens, it is. Uh, so there's information from the chief on what the document entails. There is the table of contents. Uh, department mission statement. Working in partnership with the citizens of the city Portland. Department value statement. Law enforcement code of ethics. And we're going to scroll through this fairly quickly, but we will have copies available online. Uh, there's the org chart. Employee news. Talks about different officers. Board ceremonies for two thousand and nineteen, recognition. Letters of commendation for different officers and why. Goals of the department and accomplishments. Detective Bureau information. Chief, if there's anything in particular you'd like me to stop on, just let me know. Chief, if there's anything in particular you'd like me to stop on, just let me know.
So I'll just field any questions if anybody has them.
Very good. Comparison of eighteen to nineteen. There's information on the, uh, K-9 units, we have two. Information our school resource officer and the work that he does. Information on training.
Yeah, there was, there was one question I had regarding, uh, a spike in parking tickets, uh, one year, and, uh, I'll, uh, I'll slow you down when we get to that point.
Officer Community Policing. Who's that young man?
Believer.
And that picture looks familiar, it was right out in front of, uh, City Hall, that was the, uh, Stone Suit Day last year. And then we get into some of the statistics. You got hours in terms of time worked. Arrest breakdown, felony misdemeanor violations, DWIs, grand total, uh, broken out by students at both C and TC three. And is this what we're talking about? Total number of parking tickets issued, Tom Michaels.
Yes, two thousand and one, there was a significant spike in parking ticket.
I'm sorry, but the statute of limitations has run out, Tom, you're not gonna have to pay that ticket. Okay, and I won't worry about paying mine then. Oh, you have to. So you, you are correct, see that, almost ten thousand parking tickets for the year of two thousand and one, and that is the highest.
That must've been a very heavy, uh, shopping year, I'm assuming, uh, a lot of activity downtown, couple of parking enforcement officers working, uh, probably less, uh, probably less permits, if you can, but I, I can't say for sure.
We'll shrink that down, compare that.
Where they're selling it gone down year to year.
Lot of sevens. Sixes, fives, and down into the fours. And a low of four thousand this past year. Uh, SPCA report, a lot of people don't know, but the SPCA does have an agreement with the city, and we work with them with regards to animal control. Council questions regarding the report.
Is it possible to get a physical copy of that report?
Yeah, we can print up a hard copy and, uh, as Chief said, once we make sure we've got the kinks worked out with regard to, uh... Stock share. There we go. Once we have the kinks worked out with regard to making sure that it translates well onto the website, it'll be on the website. Um, Captain McCarthy, you have a hand up?
I did, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, thank the chief and the department for all that information, um, you can tell that a good amount of work went into that, uh, there's a lot of detail in there, so, thank you for sharing that and developing that. Um, if you are still having problems with formatting, you might want to consider a PDF as well. Um, that format definitely looks different than what I was looking at.
I'll have my secretary consider that. I'm not as well-versed in that.
Yeah, I echo that, great job, and, and I read the whole thing and, and it was full, very useful information. We're doing a lot of really good things, you know, and, and when I read what the, the governor wants us to do, a lot of that stuff we're all doing, so, kudos to you here and your crew, Chief. It's, uh, you know, leadership matters, Chief, and you're doing a good job.
It's certainly a plus being a federal agency.
Yeah, there's been, uh, so the timing of this is, I think, appropriate in a number of respects, and there's been several questions that have come forward from, uh, a couple of individuals in the community, so I think, I thought now was a good time to address some other questions that have come forward and point out some other things that are taking place. So, the emergen- emergency disturbed persons response team, Chief, can you give us a quick synopsis of what that is?
Yes, uh, that, that specialized training in, um, a lot of the mental health issues, but it incorporates, um, de-escalation, which we were doing long before de-escalation became a hot topic word. Um, we, we, as police officers, deal with many, many people in crisis, at all times of the day and night, twenty-four hours a day. Uh, and those are situations that could turn volatile if you don't know what you're looking at. And this specific course, which is a four-hour, uh, long course, it's a whole week, uh, gives the officers the ability to identify what they may be seeing. And that, just by learning those different concepts of mental health, uh, people in crisis, that avoids a lot of confrontation and a lot of, um, physical confrontation. Uh, many times, we're able to talk people into a calmer place, be able to get them help they need, give their through a mobile crisis unit or the emergency room at the hospital. Um, we've had far less physical altercations, but once our officers are trained to recognize what they're actually seeing. It doesn't always work out that way, but it's, it's really been a great, great program, and, and I give a lot of kudos to, to that Dave Guerrero, because he's the one who asked to start this, and after we explored it, and we got all of our community partners that's within Portland County to help fund this, it's the greatest thing that we've done. And initially, it started out as a volunteer, uh, course for our officers, but I soon realized that, even though we did get volunteers, um, I had to make a mandatory for everybody. So we're, we're probably about eighty to ninety-five percent compliant for the whole department, and probably another handful of officers come up to do this course. And, and it's, it's been a great initiative, and it's more specific with the mobile crisis unit, so sometimes, they're able to come out into the field if we feel they can handle the situation better and avoid a trip to the emergency room with a person in crisis.
Very good. And it was a couple of years back, we worked with SUNY Portland, uh, Noel Channick was employed there at the time, and we had a retired police chief, Jim Mann. Chief, can you extend, talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, that was, uh, talking diversity, um, it's been so long, I can't remember what her name was, I, I know she was a, a large city western, uh, chief. Someplace in Washington, maybe, maybe, uh, Portland or Seattle possibly. Um, but we got as many of our officers up to that training on the campus, um, for diversity issues, and, um, when that becomes available, uh, we like to send our officers to do those things. They do, every officer now gets, um, some of that, uh, diversity and inclusion training and basic training, um, but standards that New York State has through DCJS, uh, really could, it should require more hours of that than what they get in basic training. But, but again, it's an ongoing thing, it should be something that is continual year by year or a couple of years.
Yes, and I can't recall what year that was, so if you, if you and I can't remember, then we're probably about due, so we should have a conversation about, uh, what our future plans are.
Right.
Making sure that we continue. And as I recall, um, the city significantly helped in terms of the funding for that individual, but we were also able to pull in other law enforcement agencies, some of their employees were able to attend as well. So it was a great collaboration between us, SUNY, and it was beneficial for other regional law enforcement agencies, and I think we went beyond accountability.
Right.
And a couple of other things that I wanted to touch upon, Chief mentioned accreditation, and that is a signi- significant milestone for the department, um, that basically speaks to our practices and that we are doing everything we can to stay current with what's out there and living up to a high level or standard professionalism. Um, in the past, when there are issues or concerns that come forward, we do have the discussion. So I remember in particular getting with one of our, uh, local constituents, a member of the New York Civil Liberties Union, and a couple other local residents. And we talked about, we listened, Chief and I, to, uh, concerns and questions about the city's use of force, use of force policy. Uh, if you're unaware, if you go to the city police webpage, left-hand side on the bottom, it is there for public view. It's seven pages, I believe it's a fairly easy read, and a lot of the concerns, some of the questions that I have received in light of recent events are detailed. And it talks about if an officer sees something that another officer is doing, that they do have a duty to act, and also to report to their supervisor, if it's something that is not within training, if it's something that is, uh, not consistent with the expectations of the department. But there have been questions coming forward from people in the community, uh, while the chief has been receptive, putting the use of force policy out there. If you look, it was updated just last year, and it has been updated periodically, so it's not something that has been sitting around gathering dust. A, another positive step forward, if there are complaints about an officer, the complaint forum is now online, and that was also something that came forward as a recommendation, and, uh, Chief heard that concern and made it easier, if there are concerns, to bring them forward. Last bit of information that I wanted to touch upon, we do have a police commission, and our police commission, all three members are appointed by the mayor, and the commission sits down monthly with the police chief, looks at budget and other issues. Uh, in terms of our police commission, we have a former, well, gentleman who's retired, former safety official, basically worked in the private sector and also for the city with regard to safety, and that encompasses a wide range of questions and issues that comes up. But his background has been invaluable, I think, to the commission. Uh, we also have an employee with TLC, who I think has a very strong understanding of the issues as well, another person that comes with a safety background, and, uh, really, I think, does well working for the whole community. And our third commissioner is a former police officer with the city, currently employed by another department. Uh, her experience in the city was working when she retired out, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but as a detective, and working with kids and all sorts of things that, uh, we, we get upset when we hear about. Uh, but somebody with, I think, a really great perspective and, uh, concern for vulnerable populations in our community. So I think it's worth noting that these are people who are appointed by the mayor, and it is a citizen review panel of sorts. It's an opportunity for us to have interaction with the police chief and the department. Our last individual, when she took off it, I was a little disappointed because the previous commissioner had done an excellent job, and when Eric passed, I was very sad, but we are pleased that we have had consistent representation, and if there's questions, I'm more than happy to talk to people further, because we are always looking for people for boards and commissions, because citizen engagement really does help keep the city moving forward. Any questions for the chief, about the annual report and anything else regarding the police department? So I think this segue is well, because we're talking about where we're at, uh, two thousand nineteen in terms of review, fourth place. And as we go to agenda item number ten, and we're talking about diversity and inclusion, and we know that there's been concerns, and rightfully so, with the issue of how people are treated and whether or not we have an equitable society, things are equal. And I'm continuing to try to do what I can to listen and to try to keep things moving forward, with the goal of, of having a large segment of the population that would say that, yes, Portland is a understanding, accepting, and tolerant community. So, as well as we may have done some things, we know that we can still do more. And I know that if you're paying attention on Friday, the governor, Andrew Forman, announced he put forward an executive order where he is asking every entity that has a law enforcement department to come up with a law about potential change for law enforcement. And he's not setting parameters, he's not saying it has to be this big, or it can't be bigger than, but he has set a deadline, a April 1st for twenty twenty-one. And in order for every entity to continue to receive state monies, and he's intimated that it's more than just grants, it could be game teams. Uh, this must be done. So I applaud the governor, because what he's doing is he's saying that there is a need for change, but he is leaving it in the hands of the local entities to talk about and decide what that change should look like and how to move forward. So there could be a lot of changes that come forward in terms of recommendations. There could be a smaller number, but we have accentuated the need to engage people throughout the community, and I'm talking about this tonight, because what I'd like to do is come back, our first meeting in July, and talk about what it is that council would like to see in terms of a process, because if there's going to be a local law, then council will need to vote on something. And I'd like to hear about a process for how we can engage large segments of our population and have discussions about what we can do moving forward. We got a couple more things to talk about with agenda item number ten, but is there, are there any questions or any comments at this point? Like I said, I figure giving you two weeks to think about it, and then we can come back in July and start to formulate a plan forward. Very good. There has been discussion at the last meeting about, and this was our special meeting last week, about potentially painting Black Lives Matters on a city street in some place. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor for discussion. Um, Rick, I know that there'll be some questions in terms of legally, what can we do, and uh, what are some of the, I, I won't call them straight, but what are some of the headlines in terms of what we're looking at here? Rick, would you like to start, or you want me to?
Sure, uh, I mean, there are really no particular guidelines, it's really, uh, you know, it's city property, and the city can determine what it wants to do on a particular property. Uh, my concern, as we discussed earlier this afternoon, Mayor, is, uh, the concern raised by Nick, and that is to make sure that nothing interferes with the safety of traffic, and that is covering up any strikes during those sorts of things, especially at that particular intersection. Uh, I think that we can make the argument that, uh, there's a slippery slope and that we have to open this up to, uh, future, uh, requests, uh, and may subject ourselves to, you know, some level of concern, uh, down the road, but, um, I, you know, I think we can handle that down the road if this is something important to the council, and I think we should move forward with, with those provisos that, uh, we talked about, Brian, and that is keep it in one lane, move it up from the intersection, uh, maybe, uh, near the fire station and towards the city hall. Uh, I think your plan to, uh, ask, uh, the, uh, CSEA union to, uh, help out first and see what their interest in doing that, uh, first is a good one, and then reach out to local artists or, uh, volunteers, uh, once we have, uh, cleared sort of our, uh, city employees' interest in doing this and helping out. Uh, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Chief. Phil, I'm then.
I'm wondering, um, why do we want to do this on the street and not the sidewalk? The street, it just seems like whatever we put there, it's gonna get worn off really quickly, and I don't like the idea of driving over Black Lives Matter. So, have we talked about the sidewalk at all?
I, well, I, I don't know the difference between cleaning a sidewalk when the, when the process is completed and, you know, resealing a road is different, but, um, you know, I can see those kind of concerns, but...
Chris Tyler.
I'm in favor of this conceptually. I was already thinking about maybe we could put it in, um, you know, both lanes, so people can see it in the right direction they're coming from, but I think this is one of those areas, I think we need to involve other people in these discussions, um, don't look like me, because I have a lot to learn, and Katie brings up a good point, and I really want to do something well-intentioned that would be perceived as, um, not well-intentioned. So, I, I think we, we need to keep, we need to do this right, we don't necessarily have to do it tomorrow. So, I, I like the idea, and I think we need to hear from some other folks on how to proceed this, that's my opinion.
I like that.
Further discussion. Further discussion. Kat McCarthy.
Yeah, so I would agree that the intent certainly is a good one, and I know it was raised by a member of the community at our last meeting, so got a little bit of community feedback, it might be a good idea to get a little bit more feedback from a diverse audience, certainly, but it does seem like a good plan to try and do something like this forward if there's interest there.
Very good. Nick Dolby.
Hey, yeah, Nick Dolby here. I think we're at least entertaining what's on the table here. Just keep me in the loop of the conversations, and I can probably provide some of the things that we don't want to do as far as traffic, safety, and roads go and stuff like that. The message, you know, I have no problem with any of that. And what I just don't want to do is I don't want to take individuals that are traveling on the road and make them confused in any manner. So just clue me in on what you guys are thinking, and I'm sure we can make something happen.
Very good. Would council choose to recognize a community member by the name of Tim Bennett? I would. Sure, let's go ahead and listen to what Tim's got to say. See if I can. Tim, are you there?
I am here. Good evening, good evening. Originally, when I thought of the idea before last week's special meeting, and let me give a disclaimer, even though I do own the Portland Voice, this has nothing to do with the Portland Voices, Tim Bennett, who came in '03 as a SUNY Portland alum, or as a SUNY Portland freshman, excuse me, in '03, graduated '07, who moved away, decided to come back and live here and be active in the community. But these kind of things, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement didn't start just a couple, you know, weeks ago, months ago, years ago, like, you know, there's been injustice for many years, you know? And the thing is, I think with the recent events that have happened, and, you know, every day the world gets smaller and smaller due to social media, things like that, and George Floyd, I think people had enough, you know? And I think that is why people have spoken up. I personally saw, you know, the artwork in Washington DC, and I thought, wow, that'd be something if that could come to here, you know? And I was already planning to reach out and ask how that could be done, because I saw in Syracuse, a lawyer with a private firm, the Marone, I think his practice is called Marone Practice, or something like that, a Marone law firm. They're putting money up to make that happen in Syracuse. Since I said that I wanted, you know, for that to happen after you guys speaking on Black Lives Matter last week, you know, like I said, I had no idea it was going to come up, but since it came up, I said my piece. Since then, you have places like SUNY Oswego actually doing it, you know, State College, they did it on their campus. It's kind of like around you. And I get, I do understand how people said, you know, you don't want to confuse people on the road, things like that. Whether it's in the road, whether it's in the sidewalk, whether it's a meal, it's just even just feeling of caring, just to act up, you know? And even though it's done, it doesn't stop there, start a conversation, you know? I mean, there's many other events, you know? I know a lot of people, you know, when the protest against, you know, the police brutality and the different things occurred, many jumped against it. But when you really look at things like, I don't know, somebody has a, at the cancer walk, American Cancer Society, Real Life for Life, people aren't saying heart attacks too, you know, American Heart Society, and things like that, people come up with all these different things, and to be honest with you, nothing is coming out of a bad place. It's just saying, you know, like, how can we stop these things from happening? How can we start the conversation? How could we, I don't know, just, this is happening a lot. Since that last meeting, a couple more people have been found either home, or, you know, and now, obviously, this is not local, but these things are happening, you know? And, you know, and let me also give another disclaimer, I'm a child of a cop. She started 25 years before she died. So that's another angle too, you know? But that's what I'm seeing. I mean, there's other events, you know, that might be connected to other, whether it be races or ethnicities, you know? You have, I think it's the St. Anthony's, you know, or the Spatia, and Good Fried Dough and things like that, that's all everybody inside of Baker. St. Paul's, you know, that's a big event. And when it happens, when the college kids are here, there's the real one for St. Practice Day, you know? Those things, you know? There's all these, there's all these different things in these movements, and there's not really a pushback against it, everybody embraces it. And this is something for good, nothing for bad, you know? There's no ill will, no nothing. You know, these are situations that have happened, you know? And, I mean, unfortunately, you know, I've had things happen to myself. I'm very blessed, you know, because not just from the news, but from only the news, but I'm on phone flights, and there's a reason why I'm telling you this. I do events sometimes four or five hours away. I get tired, I go to a rest area. I honestly can say, I honestly, I honestly, sorry, if I was pointing up to my equipment, I honestly can say that I've had, I've been, even in this local area, I've had police knock on the door of my window with a hand on the hip, and I'm sleeping. How dangerous am I? I'm sleeping. These are, these are things that happen, you know? And, I mean, the conversation, I don't think that should hurt anybody, and I'm sorry that I'm talking this long, very passionate on it, I just want to see better, you know? It shouldn't be that, I mean, and we spoke about the chamber and all these different things, it shouldn't be that people have to beg for opportunities. I'm sorry if I pulled too long, but if you want to make it an agenda thing, or anyone wants to have a conversation, we can have it. But I'm willing to do whatever to start these conversations, and if it can't be city funded, if it's allowed to be privately funded, I'll throw something too. You know, whether that's me personally making it happen or somebody else. I just want to see more opportunities for people. And because a lot of times, opportunities aren't coming for many people that look like myself, you know, a black man.
Tim, thank you for sharing. Katie Solman has had her hand up.
I'm sorry, Katie.
Your butt, but I did mute a couple people on council because there was feedback, and I'm going to mute you again, Tim, just trying to make sure that the audio comes through clear so that everybody can hear. Katie, you're on.
Tim, I definitely want to have a conversation, and I don't want to dodge this at all, I just want to make sure that we, very white council, do the right thing and don't go off doing what we think is right. I want to make sure that we talk to people and get feedback and do what makes them feel honored and included in the community, because this has been an oversight for far too long.
Very good. And we'll go to John Bennett. Oh, hang on, John.
Thank you, Mayor. To begin with, and I spoke quite a bit with Tim last week, so Tim knows exactly how I feel about this, and I do fully support this. So this is nothing more than me being a messenger. I reached out to my com last week, and one of the top attorneys at my com laid, sent me back an email. Basically, what he says in his email is, yes, if the city was to do this, in city time, the city employees were completely protected. But this is what he said. However, and again, I'm just the messenger here. However, if a city were to consent to a third party to do so, then First Amendment comes into play. Accordingly, the city would be in violation of the First Amendment if it selectively licensed political messaging by allowing one group and denying another group. He ended by saying, as a side note, the political activist group Judicial Watch filed a suit last week against the District of Columbia after the district denied its application to paint the slogan, "No one is above the law" on a DC street. And so they're alleging that DC, Washington DC, is violating their First Amendment rights. So again, I'm just the messenger. I fully support this. In fact, Tim knows again too, I spoke to him at quite length about this. I volunteered my time in a possible donation, but I just want everybody on council and the public to know that by going to a third party, we could risk another group, a political group, coming in and wanting to make the same type of statement. I have, well, I deny the crystal ball, so I'm not going to say that would happen or would not happen. Painting something like Black Lives Matter on a street is different than anything to do with relay or flight, for life, charity, or if somebody had sent in an email to me, a sham rap, those are all different, that's not political. This could be considered political. Again, I fully support this, but I feel it's my obligation to make sure that message is out there, so we do know. Thank you.
Hey, that Nick Dolby, you end up?
Yeah, I just wanted to also let him know that maybe, I'm not saying as an alternative, but we also do the banners over Fort Street and Union Street and stuff like that. You know, we do them for a bunch of different entities, I don't know how Rick would feel, but, I mean, we hang a lot of people's stuff, and that's always an option, and instead of looking at the road, it's right out on plain sight, you know? So just something to think about.
Mr. Tiger.
First of all, Tim, I want to say that I'm sorry that you had those interactions you spoke of, you deserve better. And this is just, what we're talking about now is really just baby steps, in my opinion. We have a lot more listening to do, and then trying to figure out what we're going to do after we learn a lot more. So I fully support this, Nick has a good idea, but I'm glad, I'm glad Tim spoke up. Thank you, Tim.
I'm more in favor of the banners, I think it'd be longer lasting, and I think people would see it more. But I think if we're going to put the banners up, we better do it in a separate place, or when we do have other functions, we're not taking their banner down, you know what I mean? I think we wouldn't do that, them or any justice, or any of us any justice, if we have to pull another location on me to put a permanent banner up.
Yeah, and I didn't mean it in Lil' Wog, I just meant.
Yeah, that's great.
Tom Michaels. I think that if Tim was to get word out there to have someone start a GoFundMe page, that would certainly support his effort, and some of this would probably move the line pretty quickly. So the idea of fundraising in terms of financial support, I guess one of the questions that we need to target first is what are we looking at? Are we talking about painting on the road? Are we talking about banners or some sort of street sign discussion? Is there a preference in terms of what is recommended? And I'm going to look for comments in the group chat as well. But Tim, if you want to weigh in, council has recognized you, somebody else, council, what are the thoughts in terms of ways to move forward?
It's Tim Bennett. To be honest with you, I mean, if, in the meantime, if there needs to be some look into things with your legal team as far as the road or sidewalk or something like that, that's fine. If a banner is okay, tell me the specs and what's allowed to be done, if it has to be purchased from a certain vendor or something like that, and I'll do it, I'll follow all the rules, whatever has to be done. I'm willing to buy multiple of them. And just to put this out there, and this is the only thing that I personally support, you know? I remember when I bought those events, the Court and Downtown Partnership, you know, that was going to kids, with part of it going to the WCA, whoever sold. So I'm under alumni association with Court, and so these are kinds of things that are being pushed. But I just feel like by having, by having, not a pun, but by having a voice, do you know what I'm saying? And being able to reach a lot of people, I'd be foolish not to, when I see it happening to others, when, like I said, you know, I see it happen to myself. And I'm going to give another disclaimer, this doesn't always happen, but when this happens, obviously, you see everyone, you know? So I don't, I don't want, I don't want anyone on the department to take it to heart what I'm saying, but these things do happen, because it's not, it's not every officer, it's not every, but these things do happen, you know? When it was, when I believe it was kind of the CDC or whoever said, oh, just get a mask, get a, for the mask, get a bandana. I'm sorry, but if you are a person of color, with a black routine or whatever, and you're seen with that bandana, and a lot of times, you will be, you will be, you know, stereotyped. Coronavirus or not, you know? Coronavirus or not. I know that myself, I can't do that, you know? Six-six-two-twenty. I mean, as cheap as anybody's bigger than me in this, you know, in this lineup, do you know what I'm saying, out of these officers? So with that being said, I'm already a bigger person. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want people having to parade over something God forbid happening to me. And unfortunately, I have to take those steps. And I've been taught to take those steps.
One question back to Tim before.
So with that being said, I have to, I'm just saying. Sorry about that.
So Troy has a comment, and then I'd like to ask council to recognize Melissa Kaiser. But Troy first.
Timothy?
Yes.
Are you in favor of the banners rather than the painting on the street? I mean, so we know which direction to head, or?
I'm saying, at least in this motion, I mean, at this moment, I would love to get the, I mean, if I could get the sign, that'd be beautiful, and if we can continue to see, or if I have to look into whatever, whatever needs to be done for possibly someday that happening, sure, you know? I'm not, I'm not closed minded, because something is better than nothing, but it's moving a step forward. You have to, you have to crawl before you walk, you walk before you run, you know? So if we're moving in the right direction, that's great, but, yeah, that's how I personally feel. But I can't speak for, and to be honest with you, I can't speak for every person of color, because every person feels different, you know? But many will tell you a lot of the same stories, if not possibly worse than I accept. And many might tell you it more wrong than I accept, because I took my time, so.
So with council approval, I'd like to recognize Melissa Kaiser.
I'll mute myself.
Melissa, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
There you are.
So first of all, thank you guys so much for having me. I know that you guys aren't super familiar with me, but I'm one of the leaders, one of the dual leadership in the Black Lives Matter in Portland County. So I wanted to bring up a couple of things about the Black Lives Matter sign, and it's going to be raised a lot around what is going on right now. So let, for something that's simple as a sign, I want you guys to put yourself in the position of someone of color. For use of this past legislation or to come to an agreement about a sign that's messy and it's uncomfortable, and it's a lot of things that unfortunately people of color have to go through every day. So what I would like to do is, I understand that there is a lot that goes with it, I understand there's a lot of messiness that goes with it, but if we are going to continue to improve the lives of black people or people of color or indigenous people in your community, we need to see that something as simple as putting a sign on the street is doable. Otherwise, we really don't have a whole lot of hope for making any significant changes in our community. One of the things that I want to address is someone being driving over Black Lives Matter. And that, I understand, is coming from a wonderful place of concern, but it's not really something that we're going to be picking apart. What we're picking apart right now is our leadership's ability to be able to come through for small things like this, because at the end of the day, please don't hold it against me, but let's call it what it is, it's a beautiful overture. It doesn't change anything, but what it does is put leadership in a position where they can show people of color in their community that they are valued. And I would like to challenge council that instead of, you know, sitting and bickering and wondering if somebody's First Amendment rights are going to be protected. And I would like to challenge council that instead of, you know, sitting and bickering and wondering if somebody's First Amendment rights are gonna be protected, like, you have the rights of so many people of color have not been protected for so long? It's really time to make a significant stand, decide where you want to be in terms of situations like this, the type of leadership that you want to be to show the people of color in your community that you want to do something, even if it is an overture, but show them the work that goes into it, because this is the kind of work and the kind of problems that we go through with our lives every day. So what I don't want is, as a person of color in this community and as one of the faces of Black Lives Matter, I don't want to hear all of the red hate. I don't wanna hear all of the white hate. I want to hear some solution based incentives on how it's going to be done in a way that includes the people of color in your community and in a way that you stand with the people of color in your community to get this one thing done. Okay? So that's all I'm gonna say. And if anything else, I'll mute myself.
Melissa, follow up.
First of all, thank you, Melissa. That was exactly the kind of feedback that I need, I think, for all of us too. So in that vein, I would, I would support Black Lives Matter on Main Street, or, or maybe Court Street, wherever you decide. Um, if we put it on Court Street, I want it in both lanes. And then, um, you know, maybe Melissa should get in touch with the mayor and Nick and sort of coordinate how this is, what it's gonna look like and where we're gonna put it, then let's just do it. Hate doesn't cost that much.
Uh, Jackie, you're muted. Are you trying to make a comment?
Billy Zandza. Right, and I am sure, um, you know, with the city's help, there would be lots of volunteers to step forward to see it done. I'm sure. Bye-bye.
Very good. Now I have, uh, Tim Bennett asking for five more seconds. And I'm not gonna start the timer. I'm gonna unmute, unmute you both, Tim.
All right, yeah, thank, thank you, man. Um, an- another thing I was gonna say is, um, and it's unfortunate and I'd be willing to hear from the groups if, if they feel different, but until, I, I, I honestly feel like until I, I, I purchased the, was, there was no media actually covering these types of things. And you can go back to the archives and look. You know what I mean? Whether that's, whether that's, you know, whether that's the paper or whether that's the, um, whether that's the, uh, the radio, you know, and, and that's not enough to them, but I mean, come on. You know? These are, these are, these are, uh, these are things, like when, when Reed, when Reed Cleland did the Black Lives Matter event, the kids, the, the kids who put it down, him and some of the other people said, "No one will respond to us." And I said, "Who'd you reach out to?" And, um, they, they didn't, they didn't tell me, um, I, I asked if they reached out to the radio, they said no. But they did reach multiple times to the paper. I went Facebook Live twenty minutes later, you know, one reporter went by, took photos. Like twenty minutes or a half after that, they went, you know, when different things go on on campus. And, and why, you know what I mean? Everybody, eh, I don't know. I, I, I just put, I'll just put it like this. I think that, um, more, more could be said and it doesn't just have to come from the, the voice and that, that, that's all, that's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to be biased. I'm saying people reach out to me speaking, "Oh, I don't wanna wear a mask." And people, people reach out for all kinds of things and, and I try to measure it. I, I would listen to someone who has a different position than mine or, or a different view than mine. I'm not gonna say I would personally agree with it, but being an idiot, you have to listen to all parties, whether you agree or not. You know, but I do find it, I do find it interesting that many topics aren't, aren't covered. You know, you have to think like that too. You know, if news stations, if, if the news stations didn't play these different things and show these different things, would you know? That's the job of the media, to report, whether it's something you like or not. You know, just, just as if, eh, just as it's, you know, the, you know, well, mayor, it's over, you're the mayor. I'm sure there's people that you love, there's people that you don't that are in this community, but it's your, it's your position to, you know what I mean, try to do the best that you can for this community, you know? But same for officers, same for doctors, things like that. Do the best that you can in the area. Uh, and I'm sorry, you know, I went a lot over five seconds, I just looked, but I'll be quiet now, sorry.
Five and a half, maybe six.
Nine. But I, but I, but I think.
Thank you, Seth.
And, 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 and thank you to Melissa for her comments. I mean, I've, I've seen her before, I personally don't know it, but I thank you for everything she said in, for you guys for being open to hearing her out.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Um, I, I've seen a couple of hands. I'm gonna go Katie and then Troy, and then we, Bill Carpenter.
Um, during our discussion, I've been looking at pictures on the internet of other streets with Black Lives Matter written on them. And they cover both lanes and they're so massive, it's not something that you would stop and try to read. It just kind of absorbs all your vision. Um, and so I think that that would be such a huge statement and, and a great thing for a little, little city to do to show where we stand. And then the matter would be which street? How big?
I'm with you. I'm with you, Katie.
And who's gonna do it? So from what John said, from what I understand is if the city takes it on, if it's our project, um, you just don't want it to be a third party's project. Is that right, John?
As I said, I'm just a messenger. I'm not legal counsel. Um, so I, I can't state, I support it. And I agree with you on the full street instead of the half the street. It's just, again, I'm a messenger. Personally, I think maybe Court Street.
I'm thinking of, I'm thinking intersection.
But we're going through that.
Whatever's decided, I'll go along with.
So I'm gonna come back. Troy, you had your hand up earlier.
I think we've heard from everybody that we need to make a decision tonight, what we're doing instead of prolonging this.
Okay, and then, uh, Bill Carpenter, did you, Nick has his hand up, but going to Bill next. Did you have your hand up, Bill? Oh, you're on mute. Hang on. Why can I not unmute you? Seems to take a second. There you go, Bill.
Good?
Good.
I, I think the banner's a good idea. Um, I think it, we're doing the Gateway Project. We have that, a banner, uh, the October, you know, on Open Fest. I think it sends a message. Everybody goes down Main Street to Main Thoroughfare. I mean, a lot of people won't go down Court Street. I just think it's a better advertisement to have it on Main Street, right, a, a banner.
Uh, Nick Doby had a hand up, and then back to Bruce Tyler.
I just wanted to say that Court at Church is the DOT's intersection. That's all. We don't strike that. That's, um, not our signal, uh, traffic control device, so Court Street's ours. I just wanted to let you guys know that that intersection is not.
Thank you. And then Bruce?
I have a fan of the banner, but I'm listening to Melissa especially. I would like to, uh, go ahead and, and, uh, paint it on the road in the meantime, and let's just do it. And, uh, I'd have, I'd ask Melissa to contact you and put her in contact, echo Nick. And, uh, you know, so we get it done right, and let's do it. That's, that's what I see, I mean.
Uh, John Bennett?
Um, I would suggest if it's gonna be painted, um, how about, uh, the section of Main Street between Court and Court Laxton?
Yeah, I like that.
I think we just gotta pick a street. We can hurry up and see how many, how many, how many are on our street. That's true too.
I like John's suggestion.
I, I just wanna make sure we're getting input from other people and that, you know, so we're not, I think we should agree, let's do this, but let's listen to some other people in terms of where we put this. That's my suggestion. But I wanna do it quickly.
Yeah, if, if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Well, one of, Jackie Chapman, before John Bennett.
Just wanted to back on to what Katie, when you look at the pictures of places they have done it, you're not talking the size letter that's on a banner. You're talking the size of each letter is easily, when you, in Washington DC, it's going across four lane. Um, so it's six to eight feet per letter. It's, it's a state. It's, you know, because it's, it's, each letter is a big letter. You can't miss it by going down the opposite lane. Um, I just wanted to point that out. When you look at the pictures, you see that statement is right there in front of everybody.
Thanks for that, Jackie.
Tom Michaels. Yeah, we, unfortunately, we don't have six to eight feet, uh, of, uh, surface. So we're gonna have to work with what we have. Uh, please keep in mind that, uh, these streets will have to be cordoned off so that this work can take place. And you wanna pick a street where it's not heavily traveled, uh, in certain parts of the day, so this can take place. And you wanna make sure the individuals that are painted, that their safety is taken into consideration. Very good. So if, uh, council is willing to defer, I hear strong support and it's just a matter of where I'm working on some of the details, and I'd be happy to follow up on behalf of council, so I'll ask for a resolution. Um, I'm gonna ask for a resolution, the City of Portland supports Black Lives Matter and approves a public display of this, of support. Um, and council hereby requests that the mayor work with community representatives to determine appropriate locations and to effect a public display by painting a city street.
So.
Okay, so the motion is on the floor from Bruce Tyler. Do we have a second? Cat McCarthy, and now discussion. Basically, it's saying council supports and, uh, asking authorizing the mayor to proceed.
Okay. Just the painting of it could be a great community event, pulling people together. Yeah. I, I like the letters that span the street to make a huge statement. And if you wanna do banners too, by all means do banners, but the, but the size of the painting on the street makes a huge difference, makes a big statement.
Very good. Cat McCarthy?
I would just agree with what Katie mentioned about, um, community engagement. I think there's a huge opportunity potentially, uh, depending on how it's painted, to think about community engagement and even youth engagement in the community.
It would need to have someone in charge who could make sure it was executed well.
John Bennett?
Remember that the best time to do this would be overnight, when there is no traffic and we would have to make sure that Chief Cattolano knew the happens. People block the street off too, so these are all things that you do have to take into consideration. Um, even though it's overnight or midnight, I'm sure there'll be enough volunteers. But this is not something that's gonna be done in the middle of the daytime.
Good thinking.
I think you could do something late afternoon. You could close the street down for Gary Corre. And Gary, you know, we have in the past many a times, I mean, it's, it's, people are really don't understand if we close the street down for four or five hours. Paint instantly, so.
I agree. I agree, Troy, yeah. And we can just close the street down and I trust Nick to work with other people on, you know, he knows what he's doing. We'll get it done right. We'll get it done. We can get this, this is something we can get done quickly.
Yeah, Nick Doby has his hand up. Nick?
At, at night, it's, it's tough because it's moist. There's dew. It's hard for the paint to adhere to the asphalt.
And the paint dries quick anyway, right, Nick?
Sure.
Yeah. So.
All right, are we good with the resolution?
So moved.
Okay, motion is on the floor and I support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Gary's eight oh. Uh, what I will do is, I will connect, thank you Melissa and Tim sharing your thoughts. I will connect with both of you and we will could talk, we'll continue a discussion about, uh, what makes sense to make sure it goes effectively. Looking at my notes. Okay, so this is officially agenda item number ten. Is there anything anybody else on council would like to bring forward in terms of the discussion? Supporting the conversation on diversity and inclusion in the city of Portland. All right, I'll have updates for everybody on this topic shortly and in terms of the painting and we can continue this discussion at our next council meeting. Discussion item number eleven, opening playground equipment. Uh, so there's been, to update people who are watching, on Thursday, the governor announced that opening playground equipment was going to be up to the local municipalities. And on Friday, started making calls, well, Thursday night and then Friday, talking to other local electives. Hey, what are you doing? What is your plan? Because I see a value to consistency where if you go from a playground in the city to the village, to a town, that the expectations are the same. And I think that's important for the kids who utilize the playground equipment, but also for the parents who may be accompanying their children. And, uh, parents can be challenging at times. So making sure that we are putting forward what the expectations are, uh, I think is very important. So John McNerney, I know, has been working very diligently on this and three thousand four hundred eighty-two other things. Uh, but he has found some good things in terms of what we need to do, should do. Uh, John, can you talk to the public about the steps that have been taken to prepare playground equipment?
Yeah, so today, uh, staff from the park, maintenance department, public, department of public works went around each city playground and disinfected, cleaned the playground surfaces. So hopefully with the council's blessing tonight, uh, we can open those tomorrow. I know the community, effectively children and families are anxious to, to get out of those playground surfaces. They've been cooped up way too long. Um, I provided an email, I think, to mayor and to council. Uh, we will be posting signage with some safety protocols and guidelines that are pretty standard that we posted at our playground sites. Um, and we will continue to clean, uh, the hard surfaces and main entry points on a regular basis. Uh, it took three staff members today, about three hours, to clean our city playgrounds. And in conjunction with that, as the mayor mentioned, have been in touch with the Portland City School District, uh, town of Portlandville officials, I think the mayor's touched base with Homer officials and, you know, playgrounds will be opening up locally here in the very future.
Tomorrow.
Excuse me?
I said hopefully tomorrow.
Oh, yeah. I agree. Hopefully at six thirty AM when the parks open. Um, I have my park maintenance staff, uh, ready to go first thing in the morning to take down the fences that are at our playgrounds as well as caution tape, so we could be open very early tomorrow morning.
Hey, John? John, did you say the equipment's gonna be cleaned daily?
Uh, not daily. We, we have, uh, you know, a park maintenance staff of three, so it's a challenging thing to do on a daily basis, but on a regular basis, we will be cleaning the surfaces.
Okay, are the, are the bathrooms gonna be open?
They are not.
Okay. Will we have a sign up that says bathrooms are not open?
Um, they're usually just locked. I mean, I can put those on each bathroom door, but, you know, we have it on our website and, uh, had a conversation with the mayor regarding to this. I think it's phase four, which should be early July. That's when we will hopefully be able to open up our public bathrooms in the parks.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to let people know ahead of time that the bathrooms weren't gonna be open. That's all.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the discussion with regard to the, uh, bathrooms that we're concerned is that we will have potentially people gathering and not following safety protocols. And as we've seen, there's a number of limits with regard to indoor facilities. So the idea of keeping the limitations, we're allowing the outdoor space, but we're asking people, please, please plan appropriately with your families, with your kids. And use the restroom before you leave and maybe if the visits are kept a little bit shorter, it may give more opportunity. Um, so council, you're aware, the public is probably not aware. We've had a couple of email exchanges and I've had whole conversations. We've had a couple of email exchanges and I've had own conversations with a couple of you about this topic. And here's some of the issues or concerns. Uh, public groupings, number of people. Now, the state is saying they've increased the number of people in a gathering to twenty-five and they're talking about locations. Um, I, I'm putting forward the recommendation and this is important for parents to hear. When we're thinking twenty-five, I'm thinking about people that are participating because in an open space, if we say there's twenty-five people in the park, there are some large parks. So think about any one of the parks, be it Suggit, Dexter, Yaman, uh, Audrey. You can have twenty-five people over extended area. And playgrounds have different pieces of equipment. So if you have somebody who's on the swings and somebody else who's on another section, twenty-five is, I think, a good number. When you think about participants, if you have parents who are seated gathered around, I don't see that as being part of the number of twenty-five, if they're not engaged, if they're on essentially a different part of the park. You're on a grid. So there's some judgment here. Also, state guidelines, if somebody is over the age of two and can wear a mask if there's no medical reason not to, the expectation is if we are not maintaining six feet of distance, that people are wearing the mask. And this will be a challenge, I think, because kids run, kids get active. And it's difficult to keep a mask on a child at times, especially when they're excited, having fun. And also, it will potentially be a strain. I mean, kid who is being active and then they put a mask on, which is going to limit their ability to breathe, is a potential issue. So we need parents to be parents. And we need parents to watch their children, make sure that, number one, they are consistent with what the state is requiring. And I know there are different opinions about this. We have a low rate currently in Portland County. But knock on wood, we're going to keep that rate low. So we do need to adhere to social distancing guidelines. And if there is an issue in terms of a potential outbreak in our community, where you don't want to say it was because of kids playing at a playground or parents interacting at the playground. So we're gonna ask parents to please be diligent, yourselves and your kids. And the other thing to remember is that even with periodic cleaning, hands going onto pieces of equipment and then another hand goes on to the same piece of equipment, we cannot clean after every child has been on a piece of equipment. So you need to be aware and, uh, use your best judgment. So I'll tell you what I'm gonna do with our kids. We'll go to the park, but if we see large groups, we're probably not going to stay at the park. I'm gonna find some other way to engage my kids. And I'm not going to go to the park middle of the day, partly because of down here at city hall. But also, times when you expect there to be a large group of people, may not be the best time, in particular if you're concerned. So maybe earlier in the morning, later in the day. Hey, bring a soccer ball or a playground ball. Kick a ball with your kid. Basketball courts cannot be opened yet, but if there's too many people, you're not feeling very safe with it. Engage in a different activity and watch. And as the numbers change at the playground, then use the equipment. And if you've been at the playground for a long period of time and you see that there is a large number, maybe you should take your kid and say, hey, we played for an hour, we played for two hours. Let's give somebody else the opportunity. Because the way that this works is when we are concerned about everybody else. So as I've talked to people in other communities, Village of Homer Town of Portlandville, if all of our playgrounds are open and people are spreading out and they're playing at different playgrounds, we're a lot better off than if everybody goes to the same playground. We do need to maintain our social distancing. So please, wear a mask whenever you are not keeping six feet away. That does apply for children ages, ages three and older, and I know, that's tough. That's gonna be very tough with some kids. But also, respect your neighbors. And let's not have a story like we've seen in some other communities where there's been a disagreement. And this is my biggest concern, a disagreement between two parents about whether or not somebody else is going to impact the health of their child. So we can have our opinions with the state. The governor has been clear about what our expectations are. And we need parents to be parents. This is a request. And let's be neighborly. And if we're able to be neighborly and we're able to make sure our kids are behaving the way that we as a community need them to, those numbers will stay low. Because we're doing it in other places. We're doing well. So it's uncomfortable, we all get that. But a little discomfort is much better than some of the other things that others have endured. Other counties, other states, other communities. Uh, the question has come up about this splash pad. And John and I are in communication about that. And we asked, I'm gonna ask if everybody bears with us, because if you've not been down to, uh, Suggit Park, Wickwire Pool, the bathrooms there are having a lot of work done. That work was delayed. We were on track, the company was on track. Then there was a shutdown because they wanted to be safe for their employees. It was a right decision for the company, but it has pushed back the completion for that project. And we are not willing to sacrifice the safety of kids by having them play in this splash pad and potentially go over where there's a lot of work happening. And it might be unsafe. So John and I have had this conversation. We're talking about how quickly we can and whether or not it's safe to and what can we do to open up more attractions so that our community has more opportunities. Back to the question of playgrounds, council, thoughts?
I think everything's covered. I make a motion to open it up tomorrow morning.
Motion on the floor to open the city parks tomorrow morning. Uh, we have a second by John Bennett. Cat McCarthy, you have a question or are you ready to support the motion?
I'm supportive of those I heard from a number of residents who are interested in.
Very good. Further discussion. Katie Stillman? Hang on, you're muted. I hit unmute. I don't know why, but it seems to take a second. Go ahead Katie.
I'm hoping that the signs are big enough that people who find themselves on the brink of an altercation can refer to them. And I'm, and I hope that people, um, you know, everybody's been kept inside for too long with their, with their kids, they're anxious to get outside. Please just be respectful of each other and understand that, um, the police are not gonna be bringing their troback and call to settle these kinds of disputes. You've gotta be able to talk to each other respectfully, listen to each other. And, uh, like the mayor is saying, be thinking of protecting each other, not just yourself and your own, but the other person as well.
Alright, further thoughts, any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? And I wouldn't be surprised if at the crack of dawn, there's a line by the parks, but hopefully people are willing to spread out in terms of time and engage at different times. Uh, word of advice, parents have patience. I know it's difficult, everybody is under a lot of stress. But we are seeing, uh, progress forward back towards normalcy. And this is an important step right here. Be kind. See your neighbors, smile, and if there are issues, try to resolve them by just having a conversation. Hey, here's the expectation and this is what we need because this is what we all need. And the more that we are good neighbors, the easier this will be. So I hope that we're able to have conversations in, uh, measured voices as opposed to loud ones. We all need to be role models for our kids. Agenda item number twelve, COVID nineteen in response. So as stated, our numbers are good within the county, but we still need to be diligent. You're seeing a lot of good things happening, uh, with the opening of phase three. And now, they're talking about other activities. So as I mentioned earlier, groups being able to gather up to twenty-five. Uh, the governor announced, I believe it's July sixth, the opportunity for low, low risk, um, physical activities. So they're talking about, I think there's five or six different sports and the opportunity for up to two spectators. Uh, they've opened up the opportunity for practices. And I'll ask John McNerney if there's anything else he wants to share in terms of recreational opportunities and what's been happening.
Well, you are right, mayor. Uh, the governor did announce on July sixth, new sports can come back. The Crown City Little League is planning to, uh, start practices in the near future. Uh, we do have some groups practicing baseball at Cutchus Lumber Sports Complex with the, uh, six, uh, group participant number. And they've submitted guidelines to follow those protocols, so, uh, we're excited to hear that those type of programs are getting the blessing at the state home.
So there are some organized activities that have been okay. So if you're going by a park and you see some people playing, don't automatically assume that they are breaking the law. Uh, if you do have questions, you're more than welcome. Call the city if it's within the city. But we're, we're excited that these opportunities are starting to become more prevalent. Agenda item number thirteen, uh, this is a discussion item. The discussion is, I, I'd even overnight parking in the Dexter Park parking lot. Troy, uh, can you discuss?
Yeah, I brought it back up, I think, back in December. Um, quite a few residents down there come to my attention that, you know, obviously there's a small fan thing on these down there's. Um, just looking at, I don't need even parking for some extra parking now and then again, so they don't get tickets when they do park there at night.
Okay, so the issue is there's some, uh, residential units and a lack of parking overnight.
Why, why not? What's the, what's the downside? Is there a downside to this? I, you know?
There's plenty of parking there. I mean, most of it's gonna be at even, it's not gonna interfere with any Mr. McNerney's programs hopefully when we get program back going. Um, we just have to amend those things for I'd even, well, I think they could have parked in any way. You just have to follow the I'd even signs. We just put up a few signs on east and west and parking lot.
Like to recognize Chief Catalano.
Yeah, uh, where exactly are we talking about? What parking lot?
It's Dexter Park, the city parking lot.
We're off, off Franklin Street.
Off Franklin Street.
Quarter, quarter Franklin Mountain, correct? The southwest corner?
That's right.
Ticketing in there?
Say aye.
We, we have the ticketing in there?
Yes.
We have.
I know an individual got a ticket about a month ago.
Is that fenced in area, is that where you're talking?
Yes.
Direct to go overnight park?
Up against the old Thompson boat?
Correct.
So all of the city parks do not allow overnight parking, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I really don't have a huge concern with it at Dexter Park. I'd refer both the police department and DPW. I don't wanna pass the buck, but I, following might be the only issue in the winter months in regards to I'd even parking. It'd be nice if there was designated parking spots for that, I'd even parking, so it is not parking all over the parking lot. And that, it would make.
Nick and Chris is God easier.
Nick, do you have anything to say?
Um, I, I mean, we, we do similar stuff in some of the other parking lots. I'm not super opposed to it, but like everything else, if we talked about tonight, if it's configured correctly, I'm sure we can do something with it.
Alright, so the next step I believe would be a public hearing. So if this is the direction, we should have a public hearing July seventh?
Please.
Well, can I ask another question? Is this, is this a designated parking lot in the city ordinance?
Rick? Gotta check the book.
I, I'm, I'm not aware of that being a ticketed area in our city.
I'll, I'm gonna check. I, I had the same question, but I don't know until I look at the code.
I believe the signs say no overnight parking.
Yes, there is a sign there. Who said that? Who put them there? I think it's Mike's point.
Sure.
So let me look and make sure that that's a city parking lot and that we've designated it as one that we enforce it. But I don't think, if it's ours lot and we out-dropped the lot, local law, get it on the flip.
Yeah, exactly. That, that's what my concern is. And I have to do without or even parking. I just wanna make sure it's a designated lot and we actually write tickets in.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Also write tickets in.
Right. We'll check the code book, make sure, um, if there's ticketing that is taking place, that it is in the code book. But we're going to look for July seventh, which is our next meeting, a public hearing before this. Uh, so Troy, I'm sure you'll let your constituents know and we'll take it from there.
Thank you. I'll be right on it, Troy. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. And our last agenda item. Consideration of, uh, consideration resolution indicate the support of the common council regarding the homerule request in furtherance of Senate Bill S eighty-two seventeen and Assembly Bill A ten-three-sixteen, which specifically relates to modification of a retirement plan status for a firefighter in pursuit of Article nine of the state constitution and municipal home and rule law. If hereby request, the New York State Legislature enact such legislation. Motion to consider. John Bennett second. Tom Michaels discussion. Uh, so this item has come forward and the request here is move it forward because it will, and it will take a change at the state level to make it effective. Discussion.
Well, at, at the start.
Yep, and, uh, it won't be the final thing. We're just trying to move the legislative law at the state level between the assembly and the senate. No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. That concludes the formal agenda for council. I had one request from, uh, public and I believe it was Christina. And labeled as Christina F. Christina, I see you are unmuted. Can you hear us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Ken, how are you this evening?
Can hear you, very good. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, council members. Um, I'd like to just address a few concerns with some of the things that were said this evening. First of all, the response to emotionally disturbed individuals, um, just kinda hit me as a little bit biased towards the criminalization of a mental health diagnosis. And perhaps using some words that not criminalize the mental health diagnosis in response to, to naming this team would be better. But, um, something that could be alludes to make a response team. Um, this should also be attended by possibly a trained social worker and or a specialty RN with a background in psych counseling. Just some things to consider when we're just discussing things like, um, forensic psychology and how that overlaps with the, um, the carceral system or the criminal justice system. Uh, my second question is in regards to who or which company performs a statistical analysis for the CPD annual report. And then my last point is in regards to the words a little transparency when referencing the CPD annual report. Um, the very definition of the word transparency cannot be sullied by the word a little. Anything less than full transparency is not enough and only exacerbates the mistrust of building leadership, the community. I think the idea of a commission appointed by the mayor is in good form. However, I'm interested as to why the individuals chosen for this, why their credentials were reviewed and yet their names were withheld. Uh, thank you very much for your time.
Very good. Christina, um, individuals on, on the police commission are Jim Spiegel, Liz Starr, and Trish Hanson, and it is a matter of public record.
Thank you.
So. Is there anybody? I do not see any other, anybody else in the chat or public comments. So public, public comments officially closed. And Mr. Tyler?
Before we go further, I noticed over the chat thing that, uh, Molly Adreco, Molly Redden Adreco is volunteering the help of the Pacey thing. I think that's, I, I would ask that you follow up with her, you know? She'll probably bring a lot of whole crew of people volunteer if she's involved, so I. She'll probably bring a lot of whole crew of people along here if she's involved. So I, I thank you, Molly, if you're still listening, but I'd, I'd like to see us pick her up on that.
Very good. Uh, one more comment from Melissa Kaiser. Melissa?
Hey, Brian, I'm sorry for the last minute, but, um, I just wanted to just put one more thing out there on behalf of, you know, just in terms of, you know, people of color and working with the police department. I know that there's been a lot of controversy, especially on the news and in, you know, little Portland, we don't tend to have some of the problems that bigger areas have. So I just want to just talk a few things out there. Um, first of all, our goal, um, when it comes to, um, people of color working with the police, I'm so sorry, my dog's being a little muddy. Um, is every person being a Jesse Abbott because honestly, as you guys know, Jesse Abbott is very, very close. And, you know, he's really the, um, epitome of what every police officer is. There really shouldn't be, um, a discussion about whether or not black lives matter. It really is just a matter of how we're going to raise support for the police department with, you know, being a part of their community. Um, I told him recently that my grandpa, before he, um, died, he was, um, a police officer in his, um, city, in Brooklyn for over twenty years. And to me, it was like the best of both worlds. He knew the people that he was fully trusting. He knew, um, all of the issues that happened in his neighborhood and he was always happy to meet with people and, you know, keep things on a very local level as opposed to escalating things. But after there was a lot of, um, gentrification in Brooklyn, a lot of that went down with the pipe. But the last thing we wanted everyone to know, um, that's important for us, especially for black lives matters to say, is that we want to work together with the police. We're not trying to defund the police. We're not trying to, um, give the police a bad name. We're not trying to go against the police. What we're looking for is additional resources so that police can have the support that they need and resources like funding for social work and making sure that there isn't a fear of accountability for holding each other, um, up to the standard because everybody should be held to the same standard. And the same thing with transparency and making sure that we're looking for solution-based incentives to make sure that the force and the community work together. So I think I just wanted to kind of make that clear because I think people are defunding the police and it becomes a huge hot-fighting issue. But that is not what we're looking for. We really are looking for that good, ongoing, working, reciprocal, you know, mutually beneficial relationship with the police. Alright? Thank you again.
Very good. Thank you, Melissa. Uh, so there it is. There's a little bit of background. So again, I muted some people trying to make sure we're unmuted. Is there any further business to come before the council this evening? Hearing none, we can entertain the motion to adjourn. Uh, John Bennett second, Captain Harvey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you and have an enjoyable evening. And nobody get hurt on the playground tomorrow, okay?
See you, folks.
Have a great night. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.